Council meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll? Here.
Councilman Leonard. Councilman Popescu. Mayor Protemberry-Duper.
Present.
Mayor Rigsby is absent. There is a quorum.
Okay, real quick before we go on to the invocation and pledge.
Honorable Mayor Protem, we were in closed session on item C, which is public employee evaluation, as listed on the agenda. There's no action to report at this time, although there was a related matter on the consent calendar IC, which I'm asking be pulled, and we'll reschedule that for the next meeting.
Okay, and you would join me for the invocation and pledge.
Dear Father in heaven, thank you for bringing us all together again, keeping us safe and keeping our town run well and functioning. We appreciate the opportunity to serve and to stand before you and the public and make decisions on their behalf. Lord, I ask that you guide us tonight and direct us with those decisions and help us to make good ones, and all in your honor, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and at the request of the city manager, I think we are going to handle the old business first.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor Protem. I would like to request that we move item number eight, which is the old business first, of which at that one you guys have a conflict interest, and it can be voted by Councilman Duper, Councilman Popescu, and Councilman Daly.
I don't get to vote twice?
No. Thank you. This item has to do with modification of MOU between the City of Loma Linda and Loma Linda University with regard to Sewer Street project. Back in May 8 of 2012, the city council did approve the MOU between the city and university for us to spend up to $500,000 for the construction of the Sewer Street project. And that portion would be spent for the construction management and construction testing and construction survey, which is a soft cost. The project is completed, has been approved by the city council at the last city council meeting for notice completion. Unfortunately, our soft cost has increased from half a million up to $778,710. So staff requests that the city council approve increased appropriation of additional $278,710 for this contract, for MOU. The money will become funding from the MESHI, which is half sales tax that can only be used for the transportation project. And staff also recommend that the city council approve an appropriation of $50,000 in the MESHI project to pay for the remaining of this project.
Clarification, so what's before us is just the $50,000 or the $278,000?
The $50,000 is to appropriate additional money from the MESHI fund balance into account.
I believe the $278,000 was already appropriated.
Correct. $228,000 is already appropriated.
Okay.
Yes.
And I think it's important to note that this was a cost sharing. It was actually an additional $100,000, but the university is sharing half the cost.
Correct.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move the item.
Second. Okay, I have a first and a second, and we'll just vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. By the way, the project is beautiful. It's a pleasure driving down that street every day now.
Thank you. I would like to mention that tomorrow night, American Society Civil Engineer San Bernardino Riverside County Branch, Ken and I will be there to receive a Project of the Year award for this project. In addition to that, Ken will receive a Civil Engineer of the Year award from the ASE local chapter, so.
Yeah, I think that deserves applause. That may even deserve a speech, but I don't think we're gonna get one.
Again, it's been a challenge to you here, working this project, and work with Ken has been very good, and he's a calm one.
He just said it was a challenge to work with you.
No, on a project, but we were lucky to have Ken on the team, so, very good. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to our regular scheduled business. Item number one is a public hearing on the Citrus Lane development. This is currently in the county area, but within the city sphere of influence.
This is a public hearing for a general plan amendment, pre-zoning, annexation, and a subdivision for a 95.
Thirty.
Thirty-five. Thirty-five, sorry, this is typo in here. Thirty-five residential lots. Cheryl Tubbs from Lumbern is here to give the presentation.
Good evening. I'm Cheryl Tubbs, Lumbern Corporation. We've been working under contract to the Community Development Department staff to prepare the required LAFCO and SEQA documents for this project. It's both an annexation and a tentative tract map for 35 single-family residential units. Because the project is, or property is currently within the county, there's also a need for a general plan amendment and a pre-zone to allow development of the tentative tract. This just shows you where the property is in relationship to the city's sphere of influence, which is the dotted line, and then the current city boundaries are the solid line. The property consists of basically two properties, one referred to as the Bell property, which is proposed for development, and the property to the south, the Ramirez property, which is required to be included as part of the annexation to meet LAFCO's requirements that you don't process an annexation and create an island, in this case, a three-sided island or a peninsula. So the project elements are the general plan amendment. The city currently has, both properties zoned as business park. The county has both properties in the general plan designated as multiple residential. The zoning for the City of Loma Linda in the sphere of influence is planned community, and the county zoning is multiple residential. And as I said, the two properties, one 9.5 acres, which is proposed for the 35 single-family lots, and the adjacent property to the south is 9.25 acres, currently developed in Citrus Grove and two residences, and there is no development proposed on that site. This shows you an aerial photograph of the project boundaries with the tentative tract map for the Bell property overlaying, showing the access to Citrus Lane and access to California Street and the 35 residential lots. Along to the west boundary of the property is essentially a bioswell for retention purposes for storm flow. And the Ramirez property, the two existing residences are here and here, and there is an existing old Victorian house located there on the Bell property. So the general plan amendment would change the existing designation from business park to low-density residential, which would allow it to four units per acre. The pre-zone is required by LAFCO so that they understand that you are taking this application and not only doing a general plan amendment, but will have it zoned so that once it moves from the county to the city, there will be zoning established. Single-family for the Bell property and remaining general business for the Ramirez property. And then the other elements of the proposal, the application to the city is the annexation and approval of the tentative tract map. Again, just to reiterate and show you visually what happens, the general plan, this is current city boundary, but this is the general plan designations. This is the only piece that would be changing, the 9.5 acres. And then the pre-zone map shows both parcels with different pre-zoning designations. R1 residential for the Bell property and commercial for the Ramirez property.
So just to stop you, the Ramirez property would not be annexed at the same time?
No, it would be annexed, but there is no development proposal.
Another question, clarification. You said R1 is four houses per acre?
Up to four.
Up to four, and yet this project is nine acres?
R1 is 7,200 square foot lots.
Okay, which is more than four.
The general plan designation is, what I was referring to, isn't it half to four?
It's part of.
R1 is 7,200 square.
The low-density residential is. That's hard to read. Zero to four dwelling units per acre? Oh, you can read it on the property there, right here. Low-density residential, this would be the general plan designation, zero to four dwelling units per acre. Everybody okay with that?
I'm sorry, if you could go back to the previous slide. So if we look at the red property, I think, or which I think is the Ramirez, you have no control over that, no plans for it, or is that part of your future plan?
Well, the developer on the Bell property is only proposing their tentative tract map for residential development. The Ramirez property owners do not have any plans at this time to.
So we're not talking about the Ramirez property, except to note that it's there and that it's zoned for commercial?
And in order to annex it, it has to be annexed with the property to the north in order to meet LAFCO requirements for how boundary changes occur, and LAFCO also requires the pre-zone.
So it does have to be annexed.
It will come into the city, and then that will be the pre-zoning designation on it, so that at some time in the future, if that property owner wants to develop, they have to develop under that zone designation or request a change.
Okay, okay.
Both of those get annexed at the same time?
Correct. Okay, so for SEQA compliance, we prepared an initial study for the entire project, including the annexation, and the 30-day review period ended January 6 of this year. Before the end of the public review period, we received a letter from the state Historic Preservation Office, and they were concerned about the, both of the properties appearing to be a part of a historic larger vernacular landscape associated with Southern California and the county citrus industry. Specifically, the house, the Victorian house that's on the Bell property, was owned by the Eli Curtis family. The Curtis family is known to have been in the citrus industry in the Loma Linda area for over 100 years. And so they were concerned that taking a piece of that historical vernacular out just for this one project would be a significant impact. So they asked for additional analysis to be done on that issue. And then December 31, another state department, the State Department of Conservation, submitted a comment letter indicating that they felt the loss of prime ag land was significant. In the initial study, we did determine, using the state's model, that the land is designated as prime farmland. And we spent a lot of time calling a lot of different agencies, including the county, the resource conservation areas throughout the inland empire, to find an area where that significant impact could be mitigated by the developer either contributing in lieu fees or setting up or somehow participating in an existing conservation easement. We couldn't find anything, and so we indicated that although it was a significant impact, there was no feasible mitigation because there was no one to take their money to mitigate the significant impact. So the Department of Conservation agreed that it was significant, but felt that the city needed to come up with some type of mitigation or prepare an EIR.
Can I stop you there?
Sure.
And Conrad, you can jump in here. I think we had similar issues related to the property across the street, and it was a much larger property, and if I recall, you mentioned that the landowner there had to purchase equivalent property in another part of the state to meet part of that requirement.
That is the issue on developments in redlands and the concrete they're pouring north of the freeway, and they had to buy into agricultural preserves in northern and central California. And this is similar, we have the sim, we're a little bit short of that answer, but we have the similar solution.
Okay.
That they will, they will buy into some type of agricultural preserve program. There's just nothing in Riverside or San Bernardino County set up to take their money or to establish a preserve.
But my understanding is that the other property, they ended up buying something up in northern California?
Correct. That's, that is a preserve that exists. There is no preserve right now in this region.
I see. And I know it's a similar subject, but a little bit different direction. I did not see, if I recall, and correct me in how to best describe this, but projects in Loma Linda should, residential projects should have at least 20% set aside for park space. How are we addressing that in this particular project?
I think that's existing plan, right?
No, 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 this is brand new development.
I don't believe that's called out anywhere in the general plan or in the zoning requirements.
Well, I know that Area D, for example, we had 20% of it set out for park space.
Area D is a special area, unique unto itself. That's why it's special planning Area D.
So, and this particular project does not have a park space requirement?
That is correct. They will pay park development fees as part of their development impact.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so as a result of these two state letters, we had two significant impacts that needed to be looked at again in lieu of preparing an EIR, which is the only way to have a significant impact remain unmitigated. So staff wanted to take the project to the Historic Commission to discuss the letter that was received from the Office of Historic Preservation and indicate what the developer was proposing to do with the existing home on the property. And the OHP letter specifically asked that the entire Curtis family holdings of 120 acres be reevaluated as an addendum to the cultural report that was done for the initial study that went out on the street. So our archaeologist, Jeanette McKenna, reviewed that request from the state and did an amendment to her report. Her findings were that about 20 acres of those 120-acre holdings were already developed, another 70, well, with modern development, meaning residential. Another 70 to 80 acres was developed as citrus groves, and then five of the Curtis family residences were remaining on either side of California Street near the Citrus Lane project. So she came to the conclusion that by looking at the entire Curtis family holdings, that the impact was significant, and we came up with some mitigation to present to the Historic Commission. They approved the certificate of appropriateness, as long as those mitigation measures, which included relocating the Eli Curtis home to Heritage Park, were implemented as a condition of project approval. Wrong button. So we revised the initial study after we got the Historic Commission's blessing on the revised mitigation measures. We did some more evaluation on the prime farmland issue, and that's where we found the project in redlands. It was the Hillwood Development, Amazon Warehouse, which is just north of the 10 freeway, that they were able to satisfy Department of Conservation's same concern by buying into the Central Valley Farm Trust, which is located in Elk Grove in Sacramento County. So staff put together a ratio of what the requirement would be based on where the conservation easement is, how much the developer would have to replace the lost prime farmland. And that's what we basically sent back out in a recirculated initial study, which went out in April. There were comment letters received from LAFCO, the Toronto Ban and Mission Indians, and the County Public Works Department. None of those requesting or requiring any changes to the initial study. And one adjacent resident who's located currently in the county, but within the city's sphere of influence, was opposed to residential development and the annexation. None of those required any response from the city or changes to the initial study. A second letter, however, was received from Department of Conservation. They thought the ratios that staff had come up with as to how much land would be preserved was confusing. And we went back and looked at that issue again, and we tried to basically use the same language that was used in the redlands property, but they didn't like that. So we again communicated to them that the Riverside Land Conservancy, which is the nearest land conservation bank for agricultural land, told the developer when they met with them that they were not authorized to accept any in lieu mitigation fees, so the developer couldn't write a check to them, and they didn't have the resources to be able to set up a mitigation bank. So staff suggested to the Department of Conservation in a brief response letter that the proponent would be required to replace at a ratio of one to one for the 9.5 acres of prime farmland to be lost, and that that would need to be done within a year of occupancy of the project site. And any farmland trust or comparable organization within the state of California would qualify. So we weren't narrowing this down to a location because we weren't able to find anything other than Central Valley, and that didn't seem to satisfy their concerns. In that recirculated initial study, we had the mitigation measure for relocation of the Eli Curtis property, the residence, to the Heritage Park, and did not receive another letter from OHP. So the final determination after a second circulation of the initial study is that all of the impacts would be mitigated to a level of less than significant, and therefore mitigated ag deck would be the appropriate SEQA document. As part of the LAFCO application, LAFCO requires two different documents. They'll use the lead agency's SEQA document for their SEQA review, and then they require a plan for services to determine how the city will provide service to the property once it's annexed and no longer in the county where they're currently receiving services. So the plan for services was prepared by Stanley Hoffman, who has done a few projects for San Bernardino County LAFCO. And the plan for services basically detailed how the city currently provides some services to the area. The additional services that would be added would be streetlights and street improvements, and also sewer-ing, but there is a sewer distribution line in California Street west of the annexation area. So the developer would be responsible for connecting to that sewer system. The second document that LAFCO requires is a fiscal impact analysis to determine whether, from a general fund standpoint, the city is capable of taking in this property and the proposed development. The build-out population, once the entire 35 lot, single-family residences build out, is 96 persons, which includes five people currently in the Ramirez property and located in the two residential units that are on that parcel of land. So that's the basis, is the 96 persons. And the need for .47 lineal miles of new roads, the off-site drainage systems, the interior road landscaping, off-site parkway landscaping, which would be a city landscape maintenance district, the off-site drainage improvements, which would be part of the street maintenance district, and the streetlights through street lighting maintenance.
I have a question regarding that. I'm looking at the drawings, unless I'm missing it, but would they not have to add the second lane onto California on the property that touches California Street? Because everyone else had to do that. I'm just curious.
They would bring California to the same width that the AMPM and Barton Vineyards, and then the church up the road. And actually, if you look at it on a map, it lines up with the east side of California, north of Redlands Boulevard. It just, it's hard to see because it jogs in and out, but the primary width of California comes on the west side. You gain the lane on the west side. The east side, we only gain, or sorry, the east side. So they will contribute to bring that width, and so you're gonna have another big pocket there on California.
And you have a question?
And that doesn't happen with the Ramirez property though, correct?
Only the ones that are being built.
Ramirez, when they develop.
They'll do it. Which will be kind of interesting, is we'll have another pocket like we have where the church is right now. Unless I missed it, I'm also, do you not have an average square foot size for the homes itself?
Well, this is just a tentative tract map, so it's not the builder.
Thank you.
Okay, and summary, what's important to you for the fiscal impact analysis, determine the current assessed valuation of both properties, that's a little under $1 million. With build-out of the Citrus Lane project, assessed valuation would be 17.68 million. And at 13.55% of the 1% property tax levy, year one, which is current conditions, you're receiving approximately $1,052, and at build-out, the property tax revenue to the city would be $23,961.
Ask you a question on bullet one, if you go back, yeah. I understand the first sentence, but when it reads, "Population is estimated at five persons for year one, and additional population of 91 for, oh, for Bell," they're two different properties.
Right, so it's existing five, moving up to 96. I know it wasn't worded very well. I agree. Okay, knowing that this is our fourth year of a serious drought and water consumption is a big issue to everyone in California, we ran an analysis because there also is a misperception that agriculture uses less water than residential or commercial uses. So we based the existing water use on the Bell property, and that grove still is, at least last time I checked, currently being irrigated. So the use for the number of trees that are on the property come up to about 10.4 million gallons per year. You can also look at it as an acre. Citrus Grove uses four acre feet a year of water. Transferring that to the conversion of the proposed development of residential, the proposed water use for the Bell property for the common area irrigation would be a little under $1 million a year. For the single-family lot irrigation, any turf or landscaping, assuming 25% turf in the front yard, would be about 2.7 million gallons a year, and then the inside.
Where did the 25% come from? Is that just a number out of the sky?
Just estimate. Again, because this is the developer and not the builder, we don't know what, the builder likely will put in front yard landscaping, and so the average of new development, that's about how much of the lot is, the front of the lot is covered in turf.
By the time you put in the driveway, the sidewalks, most houses now are coming in with some form of zero escaping. It reduces the amount that's.
Okay, so I'm assuming there's gotta be a benchmark out there, and you're saying this is about right there?
That's somewhere in the range. It could go from as high as 35, maybe as low as 15, but somewhere in that window.
And then the inside household use is based on 280 gallons a day. Doesn't sound like a lot of water, but that's excluding any outside water use. Would be 3.5 million gallons per year. So adding all of those uses up, the amount of water used for residential development would be reduced to 3.5 over the current estimated use for the grove of 10.4 million gallons, and that's about a 66% reduction in water consumption. gallons, and that's about a 66 percent reduction in water consumption. This is a very preliminary conceptual landscape plan, so you can see how the lots would be configured with landscaping proposed in the front yards, because we don't know what will happen once the builder comes in to the backyards. And then along California Street is the stormwater retention area, which would also be a pedestrian walkway, which would be landscaped.
If I could ask another question. I mean, I can't help but observe that you've got little dinky front yards, and you've got large backyards in some cases, but when we're talking about water conservation, you don't have any grass in there. You're not accounting for any grass.
No, and if you did add that...
Or swimming pools, or...
Yeah, if you added the same basic assumption we used on the front yards, the water savings may go down as low as 50 percent, but it wouldn't be any, any lower than 50 percent of what is current, correct?
50 percent of what they're currently using. I'll take your word for it.
I've been doing water planning for 35 years, so I'll be pretty close. The project then was reviewed under Measure V, where a traffic impact analysis done. The modeling was input by the traffic engineer with the assumption that 60 percent of the traffic generated by the residential project would use Barton Road and California Street for access, and 35 percent would use California Street at Redlands Boulevard. Traffic generated during the peak hour would be 27 trips in the morning and 35 trips during the evening. Everybody's concern is the intersection of California Street and Redlands Boulevard, which the improvements have been designed. I believe you're collecting for, towards those improvements. So, with those improvements at California Street, then the project, and the project in place, that intersection would operate at acceptable levels of service. Year 2035 project conditions, that should say California Street, not Redlands Boulevard and Citrus Avenue, since they run parallel to each other. California Street, Citrus, and California Mission are projected to operate at acceptable levels with the improvements that are planned and designed to be in place, which is a traffic signal at Mission and California. So, all roadway deficiencies would be operating with the project in place. The amount that the project proponent would be required to contribute on a fair share basis of those improvements is $17,800. In conclusion, the proposed tentative track map conforms to the city's subdivision regulations and the low-density residential zoning standards. It complies with Measure V. The general plan amendment and the pre-zone would facilitate the annexation and notify LAFCO of the city's intention to annex. The proposed project is compatible with residential areas south of the Ramirez property. Annexation to the city would result in greater benefits from remaining in the county to residents that would occupy that area, which that area is already being provided services from the city in the form of water, police, fire, trash collection, and animal control. And the mitigation measures related to the prime ag land and the historic cultural resources would be minimized, and those mitigations have been made a condition of approval. This project was taken to the planning commission on May 20th, and they recommended that the council adopt the CEQA document and approve the project. That's all I have for you.
Quick question for staff. We're allowed four general plan amendments a year. Approving this would be number what for this year?
The second? Because the general plan amendment for the unit? I believe it's the second.
Second, okay. And then we would be allowed two more before the end of the calendar year?
Correct.
Okay.
And then they don't, if we have multiple plans that require general plan amendments, we can group them together as one amendment.
Okay.
Couple questions for you. And I may have missed this in reading the documentation you provided us or in your presentation, but what would you estimate the average lot size to be?
I don't know if either staff knows that or get asked the developer. I don't know.
You don't know, okay. That's not what you're here for.
I can answer some of that. From looking at the schematic, there's a number of lots of 7,200, and there are some at 11,000 and 10,000 because of the way it's laid out.
I didn't see, I saw a lot of variation, but okay, thank you. You're not the developer, I understand, but what kind of timetable are you looking at for evolving this project?
I don't know that either.
We've got the developer here, if you...
Oh, okay. Well, maybe...
If you want to change them all and hit them at once, or if you want to have them jump in and...
Okay, let me ask staff a question then, and that is, you know, as, given the new reality in California with water, are we anticipating any new regulations that we want to develop within our city regarding zero scape and amount of grass that is permissible and that kind of stuff? I mean, we haven't talked about it as far as I can recall, but is that something that other cities or our city should be considering?
I think that's something that we're willing to look at. If you read our development code right now, you know, we get back to that space minus the driveway, minus the sidewalk, 50 percent of that has to be in some type of ground cover. That doesn't, it doesn't have to be grass. It can be mulch, it can be something else. It can be DG, 50 percent can be rock, it can be bushes covering that area, cactuses. So, it's a matter of application of what's there, not necessarily changing the rules. But we are willing to look at those rules, and I can guarantee you the applicant that zero scapeing will be an important part of the project and the design there.
Okay. Just an observation that some of us were talking about is that we all have, or most of us have lawns that are beginning to brown up nicely, but there are some citizens in our city that seem to be interpreting the new reality as, "I don't have to touch anything in my yard any longer, and it can grow a foot high, as long as it's brown, I'm fine." And it seems like we need to look at that, and that the timing and fairness to the developer would indicate that we ought to try to evaluate that before we get too far into new developments.
We will look at that, yes.
Okay, thank you. I think my other questions are for the developer.
I have a quick question. Somewhere in here, it said that certain, if it exceeds a certain density, it has to hook up to the city sewer. But if it's less than a certain density, it doesn't have to. Why wouldn't the whole thing have to be not septicating? Why wouldn't the whole thing have to go to the sewer?
This whole project has to hook up the city sewer. I believe when you get into the densities, I think it's half-acre lots or one acre. I got to go back a little bit.
That's what it said. I was wondering why wouldn't the whole thing just be hooked up to the sewer?
There are no lots in there that are big enough to not, not to be required to hook up the sewer.
Good presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Proktem Duper, City Council members. My name's David Wood. My company's called Strass Development Partners. We're located at 17 Corporate Plaza in Newport Beach. Staff has been great, as well as Lilber, your consultant, getting us through this project. What we thought was pretty straightforward, making sure that we paid attention to the Measure V in your, in your city, and that we're going to be annexed, and so we thought we could get this project. We're excited about it, and I know you guys had some questions about what the timetable might be or the square footages of the homes. The square footages of homes, they're basically three to five-bedroom homes, 22, about 2,400 square feet, multi-generational. So, a lot of the downstairs have a bedroom, if you will, three or four bedrooms upstairs, and then one downstairs. As far as the timetable's concerned, we have to then take this project to a final map. We think that's probably four to five months from now, where we can get the final map to record against the property. Then we need three months from there to get through a grading permit in that process. So, we could be grading first quarter next year to develop this project. What was the other question we had? Maintaining kind of the front yards, I think one of the questions is like, how do you maintain and make sure that these properties look nice even if we're in a drought timeframe? We really have a CCNRs and HOA that would control this property, and they'd have to maintain it. So, even though may not be watering, it is a big part of association, people kind of monitor and make sure that they're taking care of their properties. What other questions?
Oh, yeah, I've got a few others. I wanted to let you go ahead. So, your timetable would ideally be to begin grading in first quarter of next year, I think you just said.
That's exactly right.
And about how long do you anticipate the project taking to wrap up?
Yeah, so from the time we start grading, once we have the full finished pads, it takes us about three months to build the model complex. So, it's three months to have our models, and then we think that the absorption out here, we sold the project just down the street very successfully. Probably we can sell four houses a month, if you will. So, that's really a sellout in six, six to eight months of inventory.
And how many different models, models will you have?
We have three. Right now, we're kind of envisioning three different models.
And I think I heard you say that one would, the smallest would be 2,400, was that right?
2,200.
2,200. And what would the sizes of the other two models be?
Probably 22 to 25, 2,400 square feet.
So, 25 would be the largest.
Yeah, that's correct.
And all of them would be multi-story?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, what we're finding is that people are really gravitating towards a smaller house. No one wants the large houses anymore. They want them to be maintenance-free, so going that back to the landscaping, it's going to be very drought-tolerant and maintenance-free, if you will. And we make the houses multi-generational, so we could, we do have a downstairs bedroom that we could change into a downstairs master, and then have maybe kids upstairs. So, it seems to be working out.
You're in the business, I'm not. I'm simply a, you know, average citizen in the city. I can tell you that I live in a single-story with my family. We have been, had people walk up to the door and ask us if we were willing to sell a house because there just aren't enough single-story homes around. So, my experience is that there is demand for a single-story. I guess the other thing I'll tell you that I'm eager to see as the plans evolve is I hope there's some variety. I know that some years ago, this council took some heat because of cookie-cutter appearing homes and projects where they were all the same color, and, you know, the modifications from one model to another were so minor, it was, they all looked about the same. So, I don't know how far along you are in your project, but...
Well, we think we get paid for four-sided architecture, so we build in cities that really pay attention to what the plans look like on all sides. We think it's a better box, and people are happier there, the values stay higher. So, we kind of believe in that.
That a what box? Better box?
We do.
I don't know what that means.
Better home.
Okay.
We build a better home. If it has four-sided architecture that's really intricate, we think that holds up the values.
Okay. I'm not quite sure I understand that, but okay.
From a staff perspective, we'd be looking for the three different floor plans with a couple of different elevations per floor plan, so that by the time you're done, you're seeing six, seven different appearing houses, and with 35 units, that means the same house doesn't get repeated too often in the track.
Anxious to see what it'll look like.
What other cities have you built projects in?
We built in Redlands, and so, and what was interesting is we found that most of the people that we're selling our homes to worked in Loma Linda. And so, that's why we're very comfortable with this area. We sold 77 townhomes, and 70 worked in Loma Linda. So, it's just down the street. We felt the homes that were going to be programming for this site will lend itself both to families, you know, young professionals. I mean, it's a full gamut. It's not just one population group, which is great for us. So, we're not counting on just one sector.
This is more of a comment than a question for you, but I actually watch the housing market quite a bit because my in-laws are trying to purchase here in Loma Linda so they can be close to their grandson. However, houses come on the market here, and they go very quickly, and, I mean, they're getting what they're asking for here as opposed to some of the, I mean, the rest of the real estate market, I think, is coming back, but it is just crazy in this city. So, I'm surprised there aren't more developers wanting to do projects like this. Nice, decent projects, good-sized homes, places where families want to come, because there are people that will buy them, so, again, more of a comment, so.
Where's the project you built in Redlands?
It's on Orange in Alabama. So, it's, if you see Orange, which is on the Ramirez property, I drove by this property for four years before we tried to entitle it, so I was very familiar with it. It's on Orange in Alabama.
Is it single-family or multifamily?
It was a townhome project, it's multifamily.
Have you done any single-family projects?
Yeah, we have, and most of those have been in coastal markets, so a lot of Orange County projects. And right now, we're seeing that this has the same feel to that. We can deliver the quality here.
Just, I hope you, I'm only speaking as one citizen here, but I don't want to see more boring housing developments in Loma Linda where they're all variations of tan. And so, I hope you're creative in how you put this together, so that, I'd like our city to be interesting.
If I can speak to that real quick, will you pull up, Kyle, will you pull up the site map, please? Just that landscape one? Because we asked some very specific things from the developer, and I think he's stepped forward and able to do that, the one with the landscape stuff. When he started, we told him to go up in the neighborhood off Bryn Mawr and north of So, we told him to go up in the neighborhood off Bryn Mawr and north of Beaumont Avenue, and look at those houses and try and recreate that feel, the street widths, the sidewalks, that kind of residential feel. So, if you, you know, there's some pretty broad areas along California, there's some fairly nice sidewalks both sides, and some of the things we really ask for is that there's some internal circulation with sidewalks, and also that these houses that face citrus, they face out onto citrus, and that these setbacks here are fairly wide. What we wanted to avoid is that kind of that compound feel you get every time a little track comes in, it's surrounded by block walls, and then, so the ideal piece of this is that this then will organically fit into whatever develops next to it, and you don't get that compound-by-compound field. And they've really stepped up with that, and we asked for a fairly large variety of lot sizes that they were able to give, so there isn't just one punched out after the other one. And they've been very responsive and receptive to that.
That's what I needed to hear, thank you. Appreciate you coming into our city and helping us evolve it.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
We just want to be sure it's a quality project.
Thank you very much, sir. Okay, again, continuing with the public comment, any members of the public, anybody out here in the audience that would like to get up and speak on this topic, please come forward. I see no takers, so I'm going to close the public comment and entertain a motion.
I'll move the item. Actually, there's a bunch of things to approve, so I guess we can ask the city attorney, do we need to make a motion for each individual item, or can we group them together?
Well, there is one change that you have to make because we looked at a different date. We're looking at the 14th instead of the 28th for a second reading, so your motion, we need to include that.
Okay.
And you may take...
And you may take those together, items A, B, C, D, E, and F. And the vote should include a recitation of the council bill and ordinance numbers and other items listed there. Just to summarize and make the record clear.
And I'm sure it's already taken into account, but I want to be sure that the minutes reflect this will be thirty-five single-family residential lots, not ninety-five.
Ninety-five, yeah.
Under D, one D.
Yeah. Well, technically, that's over the thirty acres, is what I think.
See, to speak to Dr. Daley's comment earlier and/or Councilman Duper, that's from the next project that's in the pipeline. So they're chambered and ready to go. This is kind of the first of the series we're going to see.
As long as they're all quality.
So I'll go ahead and clarify my motion. I move that we approved the Citrus Lane development within the city's sphere of influence to include items A, B, C, D, and E, and F with a second reading for July the twenty...
Fourteenth.
The fourteenth. Hopefully that clarifies it.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Any other comments from council?
The only other comment is I was going through the staff report and there's a very extensive, almost sixty, seventy-page historical background for that area that's fascinating. Absolutely fascinated with the various families who've owned it, the fact that there was bus lines going from Redlands to San Bernardino and train lines and everything else. It's amazing how much that area has changed over the last hundred-some years.
And I just have one other question. The opposition was from a resident within the sphere of influence, but not within those two parcels, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Well, we have a motion and a second, and do we need to vote via the machine? Okay, I'll take it. Is there any opposition? Hearing none, I believe it's unanimous and approved.
And Mr. Mayor, pro temp, that would include council bill R two thousand fifteen dash twenty-six, the general plan amendment O dash two fifteen oh two, first reading for the pre-zoning. R two fifteen dash twenty-seven, requesting LAFCO commission to annex the property to Loma Linda. Tentative tract map fourteen dash oh seven three, certificate of appropriateness, and the mitigated negative declaration.
Correct.
Then I should have identified those rather than just saying A, B, C, D, and E, too much of a shortcut.
Actually, the new Brown Act rule is as long as after you vote, you put it in the document, clearly that's added.
Very good, thank you.
Okay. All right, so that was pretty smooth. We'll next go to the consent calendar. Do I have a motion or would anybody like to pull anything there?
I move.
We pulled item number six.
That's right, we did pull item number six, we're going to continue till the fourteenth. That was a reference, our closed session.
So I'll move the consent calendar, mine is item number six.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a first and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the consent calendar is moved. We already dispersed with the old business, so moving on to new business, our appointments and reappointments. Madam Clerk, where do we start?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Tim, I've given you a brief report for each committee. It outlines the number of members, their term of service, whether or not they have to file a statement of economic interest with the FPPC. Their terms that are expiring, those who have indicated they are willing to renew their service. And I've also given you the dates of appointment. And at the very bottom, a recommendation for each committee. So if you have any questions, I'm assuming you're going to take one by one. We do have a vacancy on the Planning Commission and Ms. Palmieri has declined reappointment. We would ask that you accept or regret her resignation.
Yeah.
We do have one application for the Planning Commission, which was included in your packet. I did contact two people that had submitted applications last year and I received no response from either one. So there is only the one application at this time.
Are we, well, are we going to go down to committee? Because I had some questions about the Planning Commission, but I guess we can address that when we get to it.
In the Budget Committee, there would also be a vacancy.
But no applications in the Budget Committee.
But I have no application for that committee.
So let's just take them one at a time. If we look at the Budget Committee, our options are, can we run with the vacancy or can we reduce it or would that be considered a reduction?
You could, you vote to reduce the number, not make a new appointment, or you could retain the number of members and direct me to advertise, in which case it's advertised for thirty days and then it's re-adjourned for your consideration.
Have any of the committee vacancies been advertised in any way? In other words, if I'm, if I'm Joe, pardon me, Joe Citizen, how am I going to know about this?
It's not advertised at the present time, that's a council action. What I am required to do is before December thirty-one of each year, post a notice of those terms that would be expiring, which does give notice to the public that if they would wish to make an application, they could do so. And the only applications we have received is the one for the Planning Commission. If you direct me to advertise, then I will post and it'll be on our website as well.
Man, I personally like to see citizens involved and certainly the more efficient way to handle this would be just reduce the size of the committee, but I'd be supportive of doing some advertising at reasonable or minimal cost to the city to make citizens aware of it. I know we've got a lot of good accountants in the city, so.
I'm not, I'm not sure how I feel about that because I'm not sure it might not attract a flood of candidates that may not be appropriate. I would, I would like to think that the people that are interested in this kind of seek it out. I mean, especially a couple of these things are pretty serious, the Planning Commission and the Budget Committee being the most two in my mind. But I, that's my feeling, I don't know. What do you guys think?
But you have a chance to interview them, so if you have a lot of applicants, we can...
Well, I get that, but my fear is that we have a flood of not-so-serious, not-so-qualified, and then we spend a lot of time reading through them. That is exactly my fear.
I'm not sure that's going to happen per se. For this particular committee, I like to keep it at seven, it's a pretty important committee. It would be nice to get some more people on there who have some background in budgeting and things of that nature. The members we have have quite a bit of experience and done it year after year and it's important to try to continue to build, you know, new members who perhaps get acclimated to budgeting in the city and hopefully stay on there for as many years as the ones we've had. I mean, the gentleman that's not renewing has been there for, gosh, eight years, which is pretty significant. I agree with Dr. Dale, we just need to do a better job of marketing some of these committee appointments that are available.
Yes, as your direction, your directions is to advertise tonight, I can start talking to the Budget Committee to make sure that they can let their friends know and so forth. I just want to make sure that, yes, from you and then we'll go.
I think he's asking for more direct advertisement. I mean, this would be a place to start.
Yes.
And then see if we need more advertising.
Yes, yeah. And I think talking to the committee members, I talk to family and friends or people that they manage a committee who, like, that's a lot of them, that's how they found out about it to begin with, without actually reading a post, but rather than talking to people in the community. And of course, ourselves, we can always talk to the folks, but we weren't always aware of who's expiring and who's not expiring until tonight.
Well, the direction would be to direct the city clerk or the city manager to work on some type of advertisement and we'll declare a vacancy there and move forward. Is that appropriate?
Yep.
Yes.
Sounds good.
Okay.
And then the other members who are willing to accept another term, are you going to make those appointments this evening or are you going to postpone that as well?
No, I would say we make those, we make those tonight. I'm comfortable with moving forward with that, but does that require a motion from the DIAS? Okay, I'll entertain a motion on that.
Which would say what specifically?
There's four members that their terms expire this year, so the question is, do we reappoint them?
Yeah, I move that we reappoint all of those terms.
And they all are, well, with the exception of Mr. Hughes, who's declined. The other three have been very involved. I'll second your motion. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and that carries. We've reappointed Mr. Nelson, Mr. Swiger, and Mr. Miller. And we have a vacancy declared and the city clerk will advertise that. Moving on to the Historical Commission, we have nine members. There are two that expire. And the recommendation would be to just reappoint those two. Madam Clerk?
Yes.
So moved, okay?
Second.
I have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that's a aye, that's approved. Moving on to the Parks, Recreation, and Beautification Committee, six members, three-year term. We have five members expiring this year. There are no current vacancies and no applications from anyone else on file, so again, the appropriate measure would be to reappoint. Want to do that?
I move we reappoint all five members of the Parks, Recreation, and Beautification Committee.
Okay, motion by Councilman Papesku. Second by Councilman Lenart. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that moves. Next, we have the Personnel Board. Three members, two-year term. We have one member's term expiring this year, Mr. Vern Miller. He's served on the committee for fifteen years now. And he has expressed interest to continue to serve, so again, looking for a motion to reappoint him.
And I could, if I could just ask a question, I'm not here to change anything, but I'm curious that two members are appointed by city council and the third member is appointed by the Personnel Board itself. That seems like a quirky way to handle it. Is there a reason for it?
That is stipulated on our municipal code at the present time.
Oh, okay, well, we don't want to fight the municipal code.
And the board, very frankly, has been very inactive, they deal with appeals. Personnel appeals and so forth, but it's a fairly inactive committee.
Okay, well, that's good news.
They do not have to be residents of the city, it's more their expertise in personnel and HR rules.
Okay. I'll make a motion to reappoint Mr. Miller.
Motion by Councilman Daley. Second by Councilman Lenart. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So moved. Next, the big one, the important one, the Planning Commission. Five members, three-year term. We have three terms expiring. And Ms. Palmieri has politely declined to be appointed again and we have one application on file.
Can I speak to that just for a second? Planning Commission is second only to the city council as far as the importance of, you know, making these kind of jurisdictional and semi-judicial decisions. Right now, we have, the four existing members have been actually really holding our feet to the fire. I think you've seen a couple of projects have come through. And from a staff perspective, they don't take second best. They really do push for the best they can get. And one of the important things that we've got on that, and Ms. Palmieri brought a big piece of that, is a big spectrum of views and opinions. We've got an architect, a design professional, and then we've got a couple of guys that have no planning background or experience, but they're really smart guys.
They're an attorney.
And, well, attorney and anesthesiologist, so they're fairly smart guys. They get the concepts and they're really invested in the community. And when we look for reappointing, we'd like to, you know, from staff's perspective, like to keep working with the group that has that kind of spectrum and that investment in the community. And when we appoint somebody new, we'd like to have that as well as expand that view beyond just the building, planning kind of guys.
I might be reading between the lines here, but I have some of my own comments before we get into this. Because we've taken this committee very seriously and we have really grilled applicants over the last several years. And one of the, one of the big things that we've actually denied applicants on was them not appearing in front of us for camera, in camera interview. So my question right off the bat would be to Madam Clerk, was Mr. Stockdale invited to come to the meeting this evening?
Yes.
Okay. And so, and that right there would cause me right now to not move on his position personally. I would like to, again, ask maybe to open this up to advertisement and see if we get any more applicants and then invite those applicants and Mr. Stockdale to return for an interview. In the process, if there's anybody else out there that has any recommendations or anything like that, maybe we might get some other applications, but my opinion...
And I agree with you. I actually had some questions of the city attorney in relationship to Mr. Stockdale. He's the owner of University Realty. What's the, how does it work as far as a planning commissioner who approves a tentative map or project and then subsequently, you know, two, three years later, may end up being the guy selling the homes in those projects? Is there a conflict that arises from those things or how does that work?
Well, as in any situation where a project is in front of the Planning Commission or the city council, each member of that body is required to evaluate on their own their financial interests and if there's a foreseeable financial effect on their personal or family finances, then that could constitute a conflict of interest that would require them to recuse themselves. The situation you just described where a commissioner might approve a project and then sometime in the future obtain a commission by selling a unit would probably not arise to that direct connection or foreseeability that you were concerned about. If they had a contract with the developer to market the homes, then yes.
What about if they have a house listed near where a project is going to be built?
Well, their ownership interests are more problematic under the new FPPC.
Not ownership, but actual, let's say there's a house for sale and he's representing that seller to sell that house across the street from a project that they're about to approve.
Yeah, that would not be quite to the same level as an ownership interest, but if, if it were foreseeable that approving or not approving the project would have a financial effect, then yes, that could be considered a conflict. But that might involve kind of a fairly complicated review, possibly appraisals and so we'd have to look at something like that on a case-by-case basis. If, for instance, the neighboring property were listed and there were a commission agreement, then that possibly could arise to that level. If it's more remote, less likely.
When Mr. Stockdale applied and filled out his application and so forth, was, does he understand how important it is to show up here or not?
I believe, I wasn't here, but I believe the question was, did he, was he mandated to be here? Not necessarily.
Not mandated, but...
But it's in his best interest to be here.
It was made very clear to him that the council likes to see potential candidates for this position and discuss their views on the community with them.
Well, that being the case, I support the comments that our mayor pro temp shared.
Only in interest of being fair, because we've... Only in interest of being fair, because we've, we haven't just, we may still end up proving him, but it'd be nice to actually ask him a few questions. And I do agree that we would also be nice to have more than one choice. But and then, I don't know, did we get a clarification? We're trying to get a clarity on whether there might be two vacancies, because I don't know if you've noticed, you all got kind of thank you letters from Mr. Katibi, and I'm not sure if that in itself constitutes a resignation or not.
I I think he was hoping to get reappointed. I don't know that that was a.
Oh, really?
Resignation. I think that was a thank you for letting me serve on it.
But he doesn't identify that I would like to continue to serve.
I asked him at the last Planning Commission meeting and he was very adamant that he wants to continue on.
Okay, well, then that that answers the question.
Unless there's gonna change in his life since then.
Okay, okay. Yeah, that's true.
Okay. So I think we have.
I'm not accustomed to getting thank you notes.
So I think we have some direction that we're, do we need a motion to declare that vacancy?
Um. Yeah, sure. Let me call him.
It's right there, in, yeah, the corner.
I I move that we declare a vacancy in the Planning Commission and see if we can advertise it and next time, let's give it a month, thirty days and what is today, the twenty-third? Maybe at the end of July.
Bring it back, next, we can bring it back on July twenty-eighth.
Yeah.
If we have him.
Yeah. So we're gonna end up having two meetings in July? Oh, my goodness, we're having two meetings now consistently for the last three or four months.
We used to do it all the time.
Yeah, well, but in the summer, we we used to be down to one for sure because of summer plans.
Second on that?
Second.
Okay. May I first and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, and last but not least, right, the Trails Development Committee? I was just going down the list, but we have five members whose terms are expiring. The appointment is for three years. It appears that all five have requested to be reappointed. However, I will need to abstain from one of them, as that is my wife, so I will not vote on that one, but.
Since yes, please, he would like to be reappointed.
Did you tell him he just was?
I told him he wasn't here, so he missed out.
I would move to reappoint all five that have indicated an interest.
Second.
We have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And I abstain, so it still carries. And we're on to committee liaisons. Do we want to make any changes here or should we just appoint Dusty to all of them?
That's an interesting idea.
Well, not that he attends any of those. There's one change you might wanna do. Traditionally, the audit committee is made up of mayor, mayor pro temp, so you might wanna be on that instead of me. Other than that, I don't mind continuing to serve on the Budget Committee liaison.
Which one was that audit?
The Audit Committee. It meets, what, once a year, twice a year?
Twice a year.
Yeah.
And that makes sense. I think we need to find someplace else to.
I I don't mind doing that, but I know you enjoy being on the Budget Committee.
I'm not sure enjoyment is the right word. But I don't know, not that we're starting to deal with surpluses, more important than ever to keep a track of the budget, but.
It's your call, Phil.
I'm I'm fine with everything the way it is, but if if Ovi wants to switch on that one, I'll switch with him. It only meets twice a year, roughly. It's up to you. It it doesn't matter to me either way. Are you thinking or?
No, I mean, we can approve it.
Do you wanna do that?
Yeah, that's fine.
Is is it a little strange that the same two councilmen would be on the Budget Committee as the Audit Committee? Because the Audit Committee is auditing the budget.
Right.
Hmm.
More or less.
No? Diana, you wanna help us out here?
The Audit Committee meets with the auditors after the audit has been performed and they discuss any, any findings that they may have or internal issues that they discover and they present it before the City Council.
Okay.
Okay, then I'll move, all the committees remain the same with, Ovi, do you see any others on here you want?
Nope, that was it.
Rigsby seems to be a busy guy. He's on all of them.
He's just tracked his advisors when he's.
I don't see Councilman Lenart.
We can get him more involved.
Making it passionately.
Dusty has to be on the Traffic Committee because otherwise he couldn't legally change all the timings on the signals.
All right, that being the case, then I'd I'd move Audit Committee, remove Papescu and add Duper, and all other committee liaisons remain the same.
I'm fine with that. You have a second? We have a second on?
I mean, yeah, if somebody wants to vote it down, I'm okay with that, too. I'm just trying to move the agenda.
All right, we have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, we are done with new business.
Next, next year, Lenart gets three committees, though.
I still think we should have given them all to Dusty. Reports of councilmen? Anything? Any airport business, Ovi? You didn't try to do any recruiting while you were in Europe?
I'm sorry?
You didn't try to recruit any airlines while you were in Europe?
I actually met, I spent a half a day at one airport in London and another half a day at another airport in Paris.
Add another zero to your paycheck at the airport there. Reports of officers? Okay. All right, that concludes our City Council agenda. Let's move into the successor agency agenda. I'll call the successor agency to order. Roll call's already been dispensed with. City managers, any added, any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Any oral reports, probably participation on agenda items? I don't see anybody. No conflicts of interest, good related items, and we have the consent calendar.
Move it.
Have a motion? And a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. No old business, no new business, and we will adjourn out of the successor agency and open the Housing Authority. Roll call's been dispensed with. No items to be added or deleted, sir?
Jarb? No, sir.
Okay. And no conflicts of interest that we know of. Looks like the only item we have here is the consent calendar again.
Question on the.
Consent calendar?
Yeah.
Okay.
Who is James Barroy refund impound account due to sale? Is that, is that unusual? I haven't seen that kind of.
Does that have to do with the?
James Barroy is a seller of a home on Van Leuven Street directly to a new buyer and therefore any monies that he had in his impound account, which the city maintained, the Housing Authority maintained, needed to be refunded to him.
Okay.
So that's what.
And what, what is the LLHA fund balance escrow of nineteen thousand dollars?
That's, that's what we have left, right?
I thought this is the amount we paid.
That's what, that's the way it reads, yeah.
Is that for this one?
Yeah, that's for the Barroy.
And that is also, that is also related to the Barroy sale. That is the amount of money that was allotted to him based upon, based upon his equity, not full equity, but a portion thereof to to close the deal. That was approved by the Housing Authority in the, in the buy-sell agreement in May.
So he sold this house and we paid for part of it?
We, we carried the loan.
Okay. And he had equity of nineteen thousand dollars?
Yes.
All right, do we make a motion for the Demands Register?
Go for it.
I'll move.
Second.
First and a second. All in favor? Say aye, aye. Motion carries. And no old business, new business? Member reports, reports of officers, all adjourned, and I will adjourn all three meetings. Thanks for showing up.
And the next meeting is?
Be July fourteenth.
Fourteenth, okay.